Would the May 14th Dune City Calc meet please come to order? It is 7:07 PM. Ms. Ellen, could we please have a phone call?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Rick McReed.
Here.
Council President Jamie Mills.
Here.
Councilor Ed Scarborough.
Here.
Councilor Ken Platt.
Here.
Councilor Marie Sanders.
I'm here.
Councilor Duke Wells.
Here.
And Councilor Sheldon Meyer.
Present.
Thank you.
Would everyone present please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilors, I'll entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
So, head.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve today's agenda. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I'll call for motion, councilors, to approve today's consent agenda.
So moved?
Second. Been moved in second that we approve agenda number five, consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. There we go. Announcements, the Budget Committee held its first meeting on Tuesday, May 5th, and the second meeting on May 12th. The next Budget Committee meeting is scheduled for May 19th, and I expect at the very next council meeting we'll have some very fine reports out in that Budget Committee meeting. They're working tirelessly on this, and we've got some tremendous outcomes, so stay tuned. The third annual Oregon Dunes Triathlon Duathlon was held Saturday, May 9th, 2015, and it was another huge success, and we'll hear a little report about that a little later on today's agenda. And tonight, we're going to celebrate birthday wishes to Mayor Me on the 20th and City Administrator Fred on the 18th, and we will be having cake. So please join us, everyone's welcome to stay and have cake, and I believe we're gonna have ice cream also. So, you know, it just gets better and better. Alright, so we've come to the portion of our agenda that will have citizen input, and we're just a little bit tardy on starting today's meeting because we had a little technical difficulty, and we're hoping to clear that up and show you what our technical difficulty was all about. And we have, have signed up for...
We do.
I will call Blair Bronson, owner, operator of Best in the West Productions, and he's going to have some comments this evening. I'm sure he'll enjoy.
Alright, I'd like to also invite up Stacy Partridge, the other host of Best in the West Events.
Okay.
Co-race director with me from this past weekend. First, thank you to all of you and the community for having us out for another great event at the Oregon Dunes Triathlon and Duathlon. Just a quick recap of what we saw this past weekend. We had over 220 participants over the course of the weekend in the various different events. A breakdown of where they came from, we had 42 participating from the coast, and this is not including our 12 day of race registrations that came out, but 42 from the coast, 30 from Eugene, 43 from the Mid Willamette Valley, so Salem Corvallis were most of those, 45 from Portland, 17 from Southern Oregon, 6 from Central Oregon, 2 from Northeast Oregon, 8 from South Washington, 33 from Northern Washington, 7 from Idaho, and 2 from Utah. So a pretty good spread, beginning to spread our reach there throughout the Northwest and beyond, and we are looking forward to, I think California was one I didn't hit on there, and we had a decent showing from there as well. But anyways, things went really well. We had some good weather, all but one of our participants finished. Somebody had a mechanical on the bike course, wasn't able to complete, but he'll be back next year. So wonderful day out there. Thank you again to everyone and all the volunteers who came out and helped made it possible. Without the community support, events like these aren't a success, and this one certainly was. So thank you to all of you who either came out and volunteered. We had some participants out there as well, and so it was a very, very good year. We're looking forward to next year to continue to grow the events and put more heads in beds and drive tourism to the area, not only for the event weekend, but throughout the year once people come in and see how beautiful the area is and want to come back during the summer for their family vacations and things like that. So we're really excited to see the event continue to grow. We have a short video here that Stacy put together. Might look a little flip-flopped, but you can also view it on the event Facebook page at Oregon Dunes Triathlon or Best in the West Events, both their Facebook pages and on the event website, and soon to be on the Dune City Hall website as well. So, without further ado.
Oh, Maury?
I get it.
He was thinking of writing. Is that early?
Yeah. Early, so I'm good. I guess if she may, pass me a little bit.
That's nice. Oh, wow, that's a gorgeous spot. Yes.
Alright, so technical question, Stacy. Was the elevated challenge in the, 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 crowd?
Yeah, that was with the drone.
Drone?
Yep. I, amongst all of the course marking and volunteer wrangling and course setting, had opportunity to get up and fly there a little bit at the finish, and I felt like that was a shot. You can't gather how gorgeous it is and the magnitude of that dune and what that finish is like without being in the air.
Unless you're halfway up it during your course.
If you're racing, then you know.
How big the dune is. Just a few last things, looking forward to next year. As we continue to grow, some of the things will be, have our next barriers to overcome and tackle would be parking. We're starting to fill up, we filled up East Woke Park and a lot of the day use area at Honeyman State Park as well. So working with the park department and local businesses to find out where can we fit more cars and more participants and spectators in the area. With that, with a larger event also comes more volunteers. The more volunteers we can get out, the easier it is on everyone, so we can take the volunteer load down and make sure all of our volunteers have a great job, have a good time. Everyone who is out there this weekend did an awesome job. Got a lot of really good feedback from our participants about the volunteers and that they were helpful and positive, and that goes a long ways as a participant when you have that positive energy coming from the crowd and from those supporting on course. And then local and regional sponsorship and marketing will be one of the other things we're looking to increase and continue to grow. So if there's anyone out there that's interested in either of those ways that we can help get the event name and the community name out there, as well as sponsorships to help us with that mission of getting this event out to not only to Oregon, but to the Northwest and the rest of the nation. Big thanks to Honeyman State Park, Dune City, Peace Health, all of our other sponsors. They were a huge help in putting this on. Again, to all the volunteers for coming out. We look forward to seeing you in 2016, if not beforehand, and yeah, thank you all very much. Is there any questions about the weekend, anything like that?
Thank you.
Alright, fire away.
Where do you want to start?
Dallas, start the end.
You should have water up at the finish line.
Water at the top of the dune?
Very top.
Oh, that's a good one.
I was gonna say oxygen.
Okay.
We understand that somehow the permit to allow Dune City merchandise to sell their stuff was not issued, it was not included in our permit, and so we would like to make a point to make sure that that gets in the permit.
Yes, we can be sure to write that in next year and work with the park to know that that's a separate, kind of a separate or additional permit to add on to it, and we can add that on so that we not only do sales here during packet pickup or wherever packet pickup may be, but on race day as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm not done. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, because you were gonna ask.
I was gonna ask you, do we owe the park a fee on that then?
I'll follow up with them if we do. We cover a good amount with our permit fees, I'll follow up with them.
Okay, thanks.
The only thing I wanted to say was, it was great. Registration was wonderful. You could actually have a conversation with the people, not pan because you can't remember where the tents are and all that. It went very, very well, very smoothly. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks for all your help with registration.
A couple of things, Blair, I had a blast out there, I think Duke did as well. It's always fun to be out there and just seeing people laughing and smiling and encouraging each other. It's a wonderful event, I really would like to see this thing expanded, how we market it. I understand an email's been sent to you. The mayor and I are members of the local Rotary Club here, and I think the email is asking permission for us to use your video if it's okay with you, credit you, because I think when the business community sees this and what it's about, I think it'll be more of a motivation for them to want to participate more. At least we would like to explore that if it's okay with you, if you approve it here.
Absolutely.
Yes.
That video is out there for all to share and enjoy, whether it's sharing with your local Rotary Club, friends and family, other businesses, please feel free to use it.
Okay.
Potential participants.
Potential participants, yes.
And speaking of that, I've had, at the last week's Rotary meeting, I had two gentlemen come up to me. One wants to swim, one wants to do the bike and run with me, so you may lose a partner, but we got a gentleman that wants to swim, and I believe is another runner. We may have four, or one, two, three, yeah, four runners or participants on top of what we had just from Dune City itself. And I sense that that type of talking has been going on throughout the community as well, so there may be more just locally.
Yeah.
I really encourage your efforts to reach out across the state lines and let's get as many as we can, and that video sells it. I know, nothing is beautiful as that. I have a suggestion, I'm race day, I'll put it out here and open to council. If we changed our location where we do packet pickup and do it earlier in the day and sponsor a picnic for a nominal fee, with you telling us what athletes like to eat, I think that would allow them to come in earlier in the day of registering and enjoy our community more in the evening and have more time for it. And I don't know how the council feels about it or you, but I'll just lay it out there just as an open suggestion.
He's talking registration night.
Yep, Friday night, some sort of athlete social and feeding frenzy.
Music, the additional merchandising you've already covered, because I personally think at the finish area, if we got some sponsors there like a bike shop or athletic wear person, even a big sponsor, corporate sponsor like maybe Nike would wanna come, I don't know. But it's, you know, the sky's the limit. Any thought on having an award for the most improved? Because you have two guys up here that damn near died while we cut a lot of time off of our time.
I like that idea.
That way you can, you know, come back next year, improve your time, and win this, it's just something. And the last thing had to do with that gentleman that was a missing runner, and there was kind of a family dispute that was going on. How can we not go through that moment of, do we have a drowned swimmer out there? Or a missed person? How can we deal with that?
A lot of that is the participants, their timing chip that they're given. That's not only for them to capture their time, but also for their safety, because if we don't know when they come out of the water, if you don't have your timing chip on, our count is then, it doesn't show you as how the water. That particular individual, his spectators also didn't see him come out. Our water safety staff certainly had lots of eyes on the water, and everyone went in and out safely. But, so as the chip read, he hadn't crossed any timing points, so we had no record of him. So that's, that's just a educational piece for our participants where if you lose your chip in the hotel room that morning, come get a new one so that we, we know that you are in fact traveling through the course safely.
Or if it comes off while you're swimming, biking, or running, make note of it to somebody.
Yep, just if they shout it out to the next volunteer group, the individuals at the transition points or watching those mats, if they notice some, if that gets passed on at some point, then we can track the bib number and then also make sure that when they cross the finish line, we capture their split there.
I think that's a wonderful idea. It would've saved that wife a lot of stress because she was...
Me too.
Was that, he lost his chip or left it in the room, or?
I think he lost it in the water, left it in the room, not sure where it went, but he was traveling through the course just fine. It is a very difficult course, so his spectators were looking at their watches, and he's a ways behind where he usually is, and that's because there was a couple of hills in the way that slowed him down a little bit.
How does this course rate as far as scenic beauty with all your other events that...
In terms of scenic beauty and difficulty, it's at the top of the list. Yeah, it's definitely the most scenic course. I put it up there and against any race in the Northwest. And in terms of difficulty, it's up there as well. Certainly a doable course for everyone from, you know, beginners to...
Security receptionists.
But, yeah, it's a challenge, but that's why folks are signing up. They're not signing up because it's easy. If they want to do that, then they, you know, find a different activity. But they're doing it for the challenge, and if you're challenging yourself, at least you have something nice to look at the whole time, so.
I even made a few notes on the course to look up and look around for the runners.
I saw them, they were cute with the most smiley faces.
Just in case people were just down like this, oh, that's beautiful.
Very well done, guys, very well done, my compliments.
Thank you.
Just an observation, I don't know the final number that we had for volunteers, but along what Blair was saying, being out on the course on bicycle portion, they were so helpful and positive, it really made it, it was very nice. As a city council, I think that our job is, is to make sure we, you know, really get after the volunteers that's coming here, to make it fun for everybody, like Blair said. That's what I'm just gonna do.
Only 360 days left till next year.
Let's go.
And the only comment that I would make is, I would like to have enough food there for the volunteers to not get angry and...
Yes, volunteer lunches are definitely on our list.
If there was something to buy, I'd buy it, but I mean, I had to leave to get something because I was going nuts.
Yes.
And I don't have that far to go.
Yes, and all our volunteers, they get their particular position, or they switch spots, so we wanna be sure we have a little packed lunch or something they can check back in with, something to make sure that they stay happy and healthy out there, as well as our participants.
But I thought this year's event was 100% better than last year's in terms of the efficiency and the, and the participation and the volunteers that were there, and everyone seemed to have a much better time. Of course, it might have been part of the weather that helped and all that sort of stuff, but I thought it was just really, really well done this year.
Thank you.
And, oh, I have, okay. I would just like to say that, first of all, thank you so much for all the time, and I know it's not just you, it's your crew, it's your family, it's your mom. I worked with her in, in the kitchen area, and I just wanna say that the athletes were just more than complimentary. I mean, the athletes were so appreciative. They, they would come out and say, "Thank you, thank you for volunteering your time." And, and you know, I'm kind of a figurehead, and people come up, "Hey, you have a great event here. You have a great event here," and this is becoming our brand. This is becoming our Dune City brand, the Oregon Dunes Triathlon, the Dunes. And the fact that you have that picture of the dune and the lake, I mean, that to me just is like the pinnacle, the panache of the whole, the whole event. I mean, I think this is just gaining speed, it's fleshed out by the numbers, and I just can't thank you enough, it was a wonderful event. We, we did a lot of publicity beforehand, we looked around to some of the cities. That turned out to be, you know, beyond our wildest dreams. I mean, we had, you know, the local mayors went around, and we had Senator Rowland, City Representative Kathy McEwen, they each brought teams, they competed, and of course, all the locals, we all know that there was a kind of a little public service that, challenge if you will, between the locals, and it is a fact that the Florence team did beat our team, but not by very much. It was only four minutes. One hour and 35 minutes for their team, and one hour and 39 minutes for our team. And, you know, our team is like twice their age, and, you know.
It wasn't my idea.
But anyways, I just wanna say thank you to these councilors that participated and went along with the challenge, and it was really fun, and, you know, thank you to the publicity, you know, makers, the newspaper, the radio, and other newspapers that, you know, buy into this publicity and helps us build our brand for the city, and we're so appreciative of that. So stay tuned for, you know, what's on the plate for the losing mayor, so we'll talk about that a little later.
Mayor, just add one question. Blair, what is your goal for participants for next year's event? You got 220 this year, you had 200 last year, you had 53, you, we had 52 the year before.
I'd like to see about another 20% growth rate by next year. We want to continue to grow, but at a rate that is manageable. So this year, we implemented the shuttle, and we grew to a size that, that shuttle was definitely needed, but it wasn't, it wasn't over, over, overdone. Next year, if we continue to grow, looking at having a second shuttle, some various additional parking locations, possibly changing our volunteer check-in area to spread, spread things out a little bit, so there's not just one epicenter where it's spread the amount.
Counselor Scarborough last month made a comment, it was very spot on. We don't want to be so successful, we shoot ourselves in the foot.
Right.
And that's a very smart business model, I can give you a minute.
Yes. So having continuing growth, but smart growth and manageable growth, is very cool.
I have one final ask, are you a nonprofit association?
Best in the West is not. I try and pay rent, and, you know, it's always nice. We do work with several, each event, like for this one, Dune City is our major partner. For other ones, it's the Boys and Girls Club, or Family Assistance Programs. And so we are a, well, I guess LLC, or...
LLC.
File as an S corp, and, yeah, but we look to partner with various nonprofits for each event, and whether that's volunteer groups or our main charity.
Alright, thank you. And Counselor Mills has a question.
I have someone I want to approach about sponsorship, more of a bigger sponsorship. Are you anticipating those numbers to change?
No, I'd like to keep them, keep them the same in terms of, until we hit about a, either a major change in our marketing plan or a significant increase, somewhere 500 or so participants, then we'll start changing those because the market value of the sponsorship positions will certainly be increasing.
Great, and I love the way you did the course. That finally alleviated the problem of people running, walking in front of the runners, going to battle.
That worked out good. Anything else, counselor?
Covered everything I had.
Okay, covered.
I just, again, from the staff's perspective, it was, it went very, very well. So thank you very much, both Blair and Stacy, and your crew. Your crew's kind of behind the scenes and lays low, but they do a great job for you.
Yes, they do, they work hard. Well, thank you, councilors, thank you, Dune City, thank you, everyone else out there for having us out, and we look forward to 2016.
Alright, there you go, yes. Good time was had by all, you're welcome to stay and have cake. Speaking of birthdays, his was on Monday.
Did he start to shave yet?
Alright, no badgering them.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Blair. Unfinishable business, we, we have none, this agenda, even though we have some, we'll bring that back next meeting. And, new business, resolution, series 2015, number one, city services, Mr. Hilton? Mr. Hilton?
Yeah, this is a housekeeping resolution, basically certifying that Dune City provides four of the municipal services that are enumerated in Oregon Revised Statutes 221-760. And the four services that Dune City provides are fire protection, street construction, maintenance, and lighting, storm sewers, and planning, zoning, and subdivision control. So again, this is largely just a housekeeping resolution. Did a little research on this resolution today, kind of got spurred by something. And it turns out, the first resolution that was passed by Dune City Council relative to these four services was in 1972. So I just thought that might be interesting to share with the council.
Have the council, have you all had an opportunity to read this? Okay, then I will adjourn the motion for approval.
So who?
Who made the motion?
Guy, deal of two.
Guy, deal of three?
Is there a second? Was there a second?
I thought there was. I'll second.
Okay. So it moved in seconds that we approved resolution series 2015, number one, dated 5/14/15. Any discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Sanders?
I'd like to make sure that I have a thorough understanding of this resolution. First of all, the fire protection, we pay $1,000 a year to the fire district. Is that, correct me if I'm wrong from the city administrator, historically, is that to ensure or to help make sure we have apparatus at the Clear Lake Station in our community to have a more quick response time?
It's to enhance our, yeah, to enhance our fire protection for the city.
Okay, and that's consistent with, let's say, a city like Vinita that contracts for four hours twice a week for police service to enhance their police service.
That's right.
Okay. Street construction maintenance, that's what the road commission does as far as the maintenance. It talks about sanitary sewers, we don't do that, but we do storm sewer, and what that is, is stormwater, those are the ditches along the road that the road commission has to maintain, and we dug out several of them in the past.
Right.
So these services are being provided. And the last one is planning, zoning, and subdivision, which staff does in the permitting process.
Correct.
So factually, we're certifying something that is true and accurate.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any further discussion, counselors, any questions?
Since this ordinance was passed in 1972, I would think that after that many years, if we weren't doing this properly, we would have been informed. So it looks like...
Well, that's a very good form of...
Well, 43 years, that's a long time.
That's weird. Okay, any further discussions before we vote? There are none? Do you want a roll call vote, Mr. Hilton?
I don't think it's necessary.
All those in favor of the motion on the floor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, moved, vote carried, motion moved. The next one is resolution series 2015, number two, workers' compensation for volunteers. Mr. Hilton, this is...
Yeah, this is again, just another housekeeping resolution, modified format last year to comply with what both our agent and city county insurance wanted for format. And again, it's a little more complicated. Basically, the public safety volunteers, since we don't have police, firefighters, emergency medical personnel, that's not applicable, that section's not applicable. Volunteer boards and commissions, we do have, so that section is applicable. Manual labor by elected officials, that section's not applicable. Nonpublic safety volunteers is applicable, and again, we have both our road commission and Parks and Recreation Committee covered there. Public events are applicable, and the one event we have covered is the Oregon Dunes Triathlon and Duathlon. We recognize there's probably some double coverage there because, as I understand it, that volunteers in that event are also covered by the USAT. So better be double covered than not covered at all. Community service volunteers are not applicable, and other volunteers, basically, CIS will underwrite anything we request as long as we give them adequate notice. So again, pretty much just a housekeeping resolution.
Okay, thank you. Other comments for this resolution, I was going to bring out that it is notable here that our volunteers are covered, that participate with the Oregon Dunes Triathlon and Duathlon. And so if you're listening to this and you volunteered and we didn't get your name, that's very important. If you plan to volunteer for us, that you let us know in case something happens to you, you will be covered by the insurance from, again, the USAT because this is a sanctioned event and under our own city coverage. So we sincerely appreciate your volunteerism and your willingness to help. But please, if you're watching this and you're volunteering, but you're not telling us your full name, we really need to know that, so appreciate that. Any further discussions on this? You all have a chance to read it, right?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution series 2015, number two.
Second?
2015.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? There are none? Call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, mayor's report. We've been busy. We, you could probably look at the newspaper and tell that. And you know, before the event, we actually, even though it was a dreary, drizzly, wet day, we went out and did some cleanup of the roads, and I think it was very noticeable. And along those lines, a fishing pole was found. And so if you've lost a fishing pole, please let us know here at the office or contact me about a fishing pole, if you've lost one. So there was like six dump truck loads of trash collected from just alongside our roads.
Six pickup loads.
Six pickup loads. Well, that's different than a dump truck, yes. So you know, it was very necessary to do, so you know, we may continue this again, you know, maybe a different time schedule next year. Hopefully avoid the weather. I'd rather, so. That's all I have for my report, moving on. Counselor Mills, you have a Communication Education Committee report.
The committee itself did not meet, but we do have an opening, so I'm welcoming anybody to make application to serve on the committee so that we can actually have a meeting where it's more than just Steve and I sitting down to chat. I'm working with Counselor Sheldon Myers, Counselor Meyer, on an idea regarding Scotch broom, and I'll let him report that when we get a little further down the road, or if he wants to say something, I think that's up to him. But other than that, we didn't meet, so there's not really anything to report. I am writing newsletter articles, so if you have anything that you want discussed, let me know.
Time again, wow.
Yeah.
You know, Counselor Meyer spoke about, when we talked about this cleanup event, you know, about, you know, and I thought, wow, we can just, you know, pull up trash and pull up the Scotch broom too. Well, no, you can't. That Scotch broom is...
Some of it was okay, yeah.
Was it over the road?
No, I'm thinking I should be able to pull up a little Scotch broom thing like this. It was so embedded into the rock, I could not do it. And so there's got to be some kind of a plan B on that stuff. It's heavy duty.
You're just not going to do enough dirt.
I mean, it's probably not going to be enough, didn't have enough, okay, yes. Okay.
Hornets review.
Your next report, Counselor Mills, since we've kind of lost control, all right.
Hornets review didn't meet either. However, I understand staff is kind of going back and checking to see what we've dropped the ball on and letting us know, so there's probably more to come.
Oh, boy. All right, more to come. Counselor Wells?
I bought all of the bark that was available of the kind I was using. I'll get some more in, I need a little more spreading of bark outside and it'll be all good.
Well, it's beautiful.
But getting there, yeah.
And the flowers that you planted in the rain two years ago, was it two or one?
I don't know, but Rapunzel plant it some this year, too.
Yeah, they're still growing, I mean, they're not...
There were some new ones out there.
Were there some new ones? Oh, well, I did notice the decoration, the pinning wells and such, and that's for Child Abuse Month, Rapunzel, or something like that.
Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Child Abuse Prevention Month, or April. Yeah, that's what that was. So thank you, Duke, for taking good care of us here. Counselor Platt?
Nothing to debate.
Okay, fine. Counselor Scarborough?
Yes, we finally had our workday, or work two hours over at the Outlook. I'm committee members, and I got my wife to volunteer, and we showed up and cleaned it up. And I still have to make a cleanup, but we piled it up and just need to put in the trailer or I can haul it out because the weather cooperated, but we still need to get a time to get some water out there in the pressure washer and clean the actual deck of moss. We trimmed the walkway back and took some of the dead limbs out with the brush that had fallen. And there's still a few there that we need to address those for those summer winds, I think, because there's one big one that's completely broken, it's dangling there.
Uh-oh.
So, and it's nothing I want to try with the ladder and the chains off. So we may have spent a few bucks on that.
Get a professional person to do it?
I would think so. It's going to take some high work to get a few of those dead ones out.
Wow. That's it, okay, thank you. Make sure you thank your volunteers for us. Road Commission?
The Road Commission met last month and finalized its budget submitted to the Budget Officer, which has already been presented to Budget Committee. The minutes are not prepared. Our Road Secretary, Lori Lorenson, has been extremely ill, extremely. She's still not back, and the city administrator and I today went ahead and put together the agenda for next Monday's meeting. But basically, in a nutshell, that's it. There's nothing, any substance on the agenda for this month's meeting, so we're just going to wait for the response to the bid, the proposal for the work to come in. I think it's June 1st, and get ready to rock and roll and do some homework. That's it.
Okay, Counselor Meyer?
Yeah, I'm giving each of you a copy of the last three months' water reports, and I plan on giving you one each month that follows so that you can see that we're doing a great job of maintaining the quality of our water. This current month, you can look, or actually, it was last month in April, and the meetings are all very, very good, they're very consistent. We're taking care of our lakes. And I plan on, as I said, every single month, giving you one of these so that you know where we are, so hang on to these, and you can see over time where our lakes are not degrading.
Are there any requirements for like the triathlon event that we have? Do you have the lake meet certain standards?
I don't know, I'd have to check with Blair, I'm assuming that...
Our requirements are tested every seven days now. We got that water quality report, there's a couple of trace amounts of a few items, but nothing major, it's a very clean lake. And Dune City has a copy of that.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, didn't we say we were going to post these on the website?
Yes.
Do we have, have we been doing that?
We're still working on it.
Still working on it.
Yeah, they have the data and they're getting it ready to load on, and then, yes. So every month, you're going to get one of these, and every month, the city will get one of those, and in the next while, those will be posted, and so everyone will be able... This is not anything that I want to keep a secret, this is absolutely great data. We're living in a wonderful, wonderful place.
Isn't that awesome?
Even the swimmer didn't pollute.
Do you have a question of Counselor Meyer, or just...
No, I just wanted to explain to the councilors that may not be aware, the locations, the VR1, VR2, VR3 outlet and outlets, those are specific locations that are identified in the Quality Assurance Project Plan, and they're to broadly cover Waukegan Lake. So if you're curious as to where they are, it's always done, the tests are always done in the same general vicinity, and it's at Dune City, you can look at it as a map.
Yeah, each of the three bridges at West Lake, the outlet is taken, and there's a shot out in the middle of the lake, too. So yeah, it's consistent, and that's why you've got three months for comparison.
Cool.
Good data.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And going to tag on to what Jamie was referring to earlier, she's got a great idea in terms of cutting out with some sort of a... We had some signs for people that were on the water committees, and you know, the signs, a little water drop, that sort of stuff. And as people begin to take advantage of having a Scotch broom-free community, she was thinking that we might be able to come up with some sort of an indication or a marking that says, "I'm a Scotch broom-free property." And I like that. I would love to see Dune City become a completely Scotch broom-free community. It's a weed.
It is a weed.
Disgusting.
I don't know how that could ever happen, and a lot of people are highly allergic to it.
Yeah.
We have goals, don't we?
Could that be part of the triathlon, Blair, if you could pull weeds as you go?
Must bring five Scotch brooms, by the way.
Well, I'm telling you, you better take scissors and cut the top because there's no pulling them out by the roots. Or jerking them out by the roots. Okay. Anything else, counselor?
That's it.
You know, when this was going on, we had representatives from Senator Roblin's office down here, I think you all know Rosie, and she's got some information that she's going to be bringing forward to us as a helpmate to water quality here and perfecting our water rides, and so there'll be more to come on that lake.
Oh, yeah, good.
Yeah, so these, you know, it just, the communication for Dune City, when you have events like this and you have participants from all around Pacific Northwest, it just becomes, it just becomes more cohesive, and it makes those political persons in Salem and around, it just makes them, you know, know us. And so when we bring things forward to them, they know who we are, they know we're not trying to pull their leg or, you know, say something false. And so they become more trustworthy of us, and I think it really has merit.
Better advocates.
Yeah, better advocates. All right, so Emergency Services report.
I attended the West Lane Emergency Operations Group meeting on Monday, April 20th. The minutes are in your packet, I'm not going to go into great detail about this. Couple of things, KCST's owner and manager were at the meeting requesting assistance in obtaining grant funding to put up another tower at the location where the station is because their emergency tower is in a very remote location, and for there to be a 9.2 plus earthquake event, or even if it's, you know, if the bridge goes out or they don't have the ability to get to, even if they blow a fuse or something, they don't have any way to get there to fix it. So they want a tower at the station that they can just go outside, and you know, they need to, and use it in case of an emergency, which sounds like a reasonable thing. And I really, on behalf of the city, told them how much we appreciate that they're that concerned for the community, that they are willing to go to this expense. They're not asking for the money from us, they just would like, you know, letters of support when they do find that money to try and do this. I thought that was great.
Wow.
We're going, as we all know, into the budget process for WeLog as well. And Megan Mesmer, who is the Assistant City Manager for City of Florence, came up with a proposed budget, very, very rough, just ideas for us to start talking about. So that will be the greatest and most important thing to come for the next couple of weeks. Other than, I also attended a billion other meetings, but I didn't do a report on, for the FEMA and the Emergency Operations Plan. And WeLog is Monday, there will be an update on the WeLog Emergency Operations Plan. Real good time to come hear what's going on, if you're curious at all, from 1:00 to 4:00 on Monday, the 18th. At the, the Emergency Operations Plan meeting is at the fire station. The WeLog Board meeting is going on the road, it's gonna be in City of Florence on Monday. Tuesday is Resource and Recovery from 9:00 to 12:00, and Debris Removal from 1:00 to 4:00. The debris removal conflicts with our budget meeting. And the morning meeting conflicts with another obligation that I have. So I, I do need somebody else to cover that meeting on Tuesday. And then Wednesday is Critical Infrastructure, that would be roads and water and that kind of thing. That's 9:00 to 12:00 at the fire station. And hallelujah, I'm finally gonna go and find out what they're gonna do with my arm, so I need somebody to cover that one too, on Wednesday, the 20th. Alright, so there's more, I think. Have you heard, are there, are the meetings still on for the 26th and 27th? Fatality Management and Damage Assessment?
I believe they are.
Air Support and Mass Care?
Yes.
Okay.
Could it give me nightmares?
I don't know. Can it give you nightmares? Try going to the meetings! It's country where I can talk about dead people all the time. Anyway, I can cover those meetings, but, but I am gonna have trouble with Tuesday and Wednesday. And that's all I have, unless anybody's got any questions?
I have some questions.
Yes, sir. Well, maybe we should take a break. Alright, let's go then.
Okay. I read the minutes from the March 23rd meeting, Jamie. And in it, it says the current, their financial report that their current balance is basically $16,000. And 54% has been expended yearly excluding contingency. This document doesn't have a date, but I'm assuming this was given at the April meeting, in which it shows that it's at 59%, and that's three quarters of the year has gone by. It's showing a balance of cash, 16K. And the discussion is centered on raising dues, and I'm just curious why? Or we can talk offline about it, but I just, I'm seeing this information...
The down and dirty, the down and dirty. If you look at, one of the hand, I should come, and we didn't get the whole handout. I mean, it was a greatly huge thing. But the fact of the matter is, we are spending about, well, the $32,000 that she came up with? Historically, that's what WeLog was spending, is $32,000 more than they were bringing in. So that's why the, if we continue, then we're, like the city is with the road funds, we begin mining into the resources and we end up a few years down the road with nothing to fall back on. So it's basically the same story that we as a city are dealing with, probably every city in the state is dealing with, probably the counties too. The fact is, we had a surplus, and now we're beginning to dip into them and use them, and it's getting scary. It's getting slim pickings.
Well, maybe I need to look at the numbers, from what the information I have shows, if that's really not the case.
Well, perhaps something hasn't been paid yet, I don't know, something big, you know, I, I don't know. But Fred will be there and he's been through the budget process with them before, so.
Counselor Sanders is, you know, basically echoing the concern that I voiced when you brought that up with me.
Now, it's, it's, I don't think she really is pushing for that big of an increase.
My question is more, and I'm not sitting on the board, but I'm just saying as our rep, I mean, I, I want, I don't understand the lead from the documentation presented.
At this point, I don't need, and I sit on the board.
I do know that one employee of the fire department is now going to be an employee of WeLog and be paid through WeLog for a big portion of their time. And that may be it, I don't know, but it's all just getting started. WeLog is not required to meet the budget requirements the way we are. You know, it's not very difficult to change the budget after, if something needs to be done.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Mr. Hilton, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do. Thank you. Largely, most of the material in my report's already been discussed this evening. I guess the one thing that is important I want to talk about is that even though there was no Planning Commission meeting in April, staff continued working diligently on the Chapter 155 update. Everyone knows that the Planning Commission has worked very hard over the last couple of years to, to get those changes on the ground and make them happen. And we want to follow through and make sure that they get implemented. I guess the other thing that is very important to me is the budget process is moving along very smoothly and the mayor alluded to that during the announcements. I think our third budget meeting will find this moving in even a more positive direction. So I'm excited about that. I also wanted to comment that our, or keep our close clean event that took place on April 26th was huge. We didn't have the turnout we hoped for, but again, for a very, very small group of people, I think there were 14 people involved. We cleaned up everything from the Sayeslot River Bridge all the way down through Glanada and all of, both sides of Canary Road from Highway 101, almost all the way to Clear Lake Road. So, really, really good turnout, really hard work, and job well done to everybody. The other thing I'm very pleased to say is our evaluation, our seismic and horizontal evaluation of the building, City Hall Building, was done this week. And while I don't have the formal written report in front of me yet, the professional engineer that was here was very impressed with the structure and had nothing but positive things to say. So I'm expecting that very, very minor adjustments, if any, will be required to the building before we move ahead with the backup generator.
Wow. That's good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a question. Mr. City Administrator, in your report, you have the rebuilding of our website on a new hosting service.
Huh?
Is my Dune City email address ready to be active again?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
We have to, we do have to, we'll have to go through the same thing we went through the first time.
I'm with you.
Okay, anything for the good of the order? Okay, Counselor Wells?
I believe this is for the good of the order, and it's about our staff here. I think they're doing an outstanding job. And I would like to ask the city council to take this month and think about our work agreement and their employment status of our city employees right now. And maybe in the future, coming up, pretty soon, we can have a work session or executive session, whatever we need to do. I think we can do better for our city staff. And I'd just like the council to think about that this month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Myers?
I'd like to add an idea.
Counselor Sanders? So let's, let's, uh, agendize that for next month, Counselor, okay? Counselor Platt? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Oh, move. Second.
Moved and seconded, we adjourned, seven minutes after eight, let's eat cake. Hey, boys!